All right, let's begin. Welcome, everyone. If you would, would you stand with me? We'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful summer day, and we thank you for this opportunity to gather to talk about county business and make important decisions for Titus. We just turned this agenda over to you, ask that you guide and direct each item, that we would make decisions that are best, long-term, for the people of this community. Thank you for the employees, the elected officials, those that serve the county, and most of all, Lord, for our constituents, the taxpayers, the residents of this community. We ask for your continued blessing on Titus County, and we, again, thank you for today. In Jesus' name, amen.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, today is the 9th of August, 9:00 a.m. We're meeting in the Titus County Courthouse, main courtroom. We'll begin with item number one, public comment time. I've got a request here by Mary Flowers to speak, and if anyone else wants to speak to the commissioners on a non-agenda item, this would be a good time. Mary, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please. No.
Good morning. I appreciate y'all, again, for letting me come and address the court.
Speak up, just a wee bit.
Is this okay? Is this better?
Yeah, as long as we can hear you.
Okay. In my accounting trade, there are certain procedures that I have to go through to do my job, and it seems, I guess I'm having a hard time finding information on the county website, and I don't know how that information is not getting to the webpage. I don't know who's in charge of that, and I bring up one particular report, and it's the treasurer's report. The last report on the webpage, on Titus County webpage, is from May of 2021. So I'm not for sure whose responsibility it is to get the information from the financial department or engine transmission, how that information is not flowing to the webpage or to the other county officials to get their information. So there seems to be an information flow blockage, and I'm just wondering whose responsibility it is for the webpage to be updated, because I checked a couple of different other counties that had comparable population size to Titus County. I wasn't looking at numbers or anything like that. I was looking at the webpage in particular, and, gosh, their webpages are so nice. I looked at Hopkins County, and I looked at Upstream County. They are really, really nice webpages. So I'm just wondering who's, if you're not following procedures, or maybe there's just an information flow blockage, but for some reason, the information is not getting from here to the webpage. And my professional background in the accounting trade has afforded me many opportunities to experience different industries, and currently I have experienced in over 45 different industries. In the accounting trade, you have to follow procedures, and it's called due diligence, and hence my meticulous nature, okay? I don't have letters and credentials behind my name. I have to do what's right all the time, because my skills and knowledge are constantly in question if I even make one mistake, because I do not have those letters and credentials. So I guess, you know, my livelihood depends on being correct and following procedures to make sure my information goes somewhere. So I don't understand why our webpage, the Titus County webpage, is so... It's ugly. And I'm not for sure who's in charge of that. There's got to be somebody whose responsibility is to update that webpage, and somebody's not doing it, and it hurts. It hurts the county. People looking at our county, they pull up the county webpage. It's ugly, and I would hope that the court, the county, whoever's responsibility of that, would take that a little more seriously and update the information for that. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I'll just make a brief comment on that. You know, in the 10 and a half years I've been here, nobody's ever called me and said they need something off of that website that they're not getting. If you're referring to the treasurer's report that we provide every commissioner's court, you're always welcome to have a copy. There are any number of things, I suppose, you could pile onto a website, but my question is, is it worth the time and the effort to put stuff that's not required to be there? In my opinion, no. If there's ever something that you want to see, it's going to be a lot easier to call my office or the auditor and say, "May I have a copy of this? Be glad to get it for you." All right. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to consideration of our minutes from our last meeting in July on the 26th.
Make it motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the minutes from July the 26th.
Six.
Second, Commissioner Fitch, is there any discussion or questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item three, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start with Commissioner Parchman.
We finished up County Road 1905, fixed all the soft spots, got it ready for chip seal. We've been installing culverts, patching potholes, and we're currently on County Road 1697, rounding it up, getting it ready for chip seal, pulling ditches, and we got County Road 1695 ready for chip seal as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Fitch.
Okay, precinct two, we have been addressing base failures on 2500, and we've had a lot of heavy truck traffic through there, and we have that road posted, so we have been doing some policing out there, and we've got all that stopped for the current time. Glad about that, less damage on the road. We've also been doing some base failures on 1070. We've been doing a little paving on 1150 and 1153. We still have a few base failures there to fix. We've been mowing around the county and side cutting all around the Winfield area, West New Hope area, installing culverts for new construction. We installed four culverts just last week for new homes going in, and one for a guy who has some property. He was doing an improvement there at his gate so he can get in and out for agricultural use, so that's a kind of invisible growth, which is a good thing.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Applewhite.
We've finished up 1905, getting it ready to chip seal. We finished 3240, working on it to get it chip sealed, and we're on 3243 right now, and we're getting it ready to finish up and get it ready to chip seal. We've got those 1905 and 3240, we have it sealed, and so we're just waiting on the chipper. And we've got all the mowing done, and now he's side cutting. Talco and all that come back this way, and that's about it.
Commissioner Parker.
We had, got 4315 chip sealed last week, and were able to get it completed. It's been a long, long period of time, because we went into the winter with it, and we had to do some more, go back in, do some more work back on it, but we've got it chip sealed now, and it's a good road, ready to go. We have installed a few culverts, and we started Wednesday, I guess it was, Wednesday and Thursday, and done some mowing while we were waiting on some more oil, sand, and all to come in, and we're scavenging now. Scavenging, got three roads that we're trying to do some scavenging on to get them ready to go through the winter and all. We've got two more roads that we had completed, which First Street and 4215 and 4240, that we're going to chip seal if we can get everything going back on it. We had had a little mishap last week at, on 4045, we were trying to finish up chip sealing that we moved across the road, it's just across the road from 4315. We had some old gravel left, and so we moved over there and was going to finish up, and had a, we were trying to get back straight in the road. We'd come off a little road there by Cookville Store, and had a, when we were trying to get back straight on 4045, it was, we caught a, they've got some concrete culverts out there, or the banister, and they're not but about three foot tall, and the, when we were backing up to get straight, we caught one of them with one of our hoppers and messed it up a little bit, and we're looking to try to get it fixed and all now. So hopefully, the jester's supposed to be there this morning to look at it and all. Hopefully, we'll get something done on that and all here in the next few days.
All right. Thank you. Item number four, presentation by Chief McCray regarding fire protection in Titus County. This is our second in a, what we hope will be a regular time of education and interaction, communication between us and Chief McCray, for him to kind of give us an update of the status of fire protection and our joint efforts between the county volunteer departments and the city department. And so he was here a couple of months ago, and we're going to try to do this every two months, so it's been two months. So welcome back, Chief. Thanks for the literature you brought to us today, and floor is yours.
Thank you, Judge. Like I said, I did give you some reports. We're not going to go over those in detail, but we will, we'll go over those with you. As far as the reports that are being turned in by the BFDs, those are getting on time. Everybody's getting those in according to the schedule that's in the agreement. We're having a good attendance at our chief's meetings. All the chiefs have attended the last couple of meetings, with the exception of Cookville in June, and about the time we had our meeting, they had a fire, and they didn't get to make it, but they would have been there if they had not. The first report I'll bring your attention to is the countywide firefighter membership and training document, and if you look through that, you can see if there are orange-colored in those particular spots, those are training that is needed and wanted. If it has a black one in it, that is a subject that that particular person does not want any training in, and you'll notice pretty much Cookville, Talco, and Argo are the departments that have the most orange in there and lacking the training. The next report is the training conducted countywide. These are training sessions that we conduct once a month for all the departments to attend, and it's basically focusing right now on the training that's outlined in the agreement that volunteers have. So in June, we did water shuttle operations, which is essential to firefighting, firefighter support for a structured fire, and you can see the departments that attended and how many of each department attended. And in June, there were 89 volunteer firefighters on the rolls, and you can see there were only 26 that attended that training, which is about 29%. Usually, you'll have two months when I give a report, but since June is the first time the departments were supposed to turn in the training, so it's only for one month. Also, you'll notice, I made note that we have three firefighters in the county that are on two different departments. We only counted them once. So when you look at the documents that are attached to it, it shows all the folks that attended that training session. The next report is the train that is conducted at the volunteer fire departments, and again, in June, there was only one report, or only one month, and you should see that Talco, NorTEX, and Argo was the only ones that turned in training for that month, and how many of each department attended the training has the number that's on there. You'll notice NorTEX did have two training meetings that month, where Talco and Argo only had one. Attached to that report is the individual that shows, it's broken down by department on who attended what training, it those departments.
So they can do training within their own department on their facility, at their property, I guess, and then you offer, I guess, a location of your choosing.
Yes.
Training where everyone is invited.
Correct.
Okay, and that's taught by your professional firefighters.
Correct. You remember, the agreement requires that the departments are to offer 20 hours of training each year, and so, you know, we're going to offer the countywide training, and that can count as part of that 20. They don't necessarily have to have 20 hours at their department. They just have to offer it well. When we have the countywide training that's offered to those departments, so that counts as part of the training for those that attend. The next report, or it's attached there, is the status of county volunteer firefighter training programs. This is actually a list that we're keeping up with at the station. I think I told you before, we've set up a Dropbox account, and we've provided that information to all the volunteer departments, and essentially, it's online training. We take and put the lessons in there, the PowerPoint lesson plan, reading material and all that, and they have access to it, and once they do that, they can contact us, and we'll give the written test and the skills test for those particular subjects, and you can kind of see the ones that are on the Dropbox at this point, and we are still working and adding those weekly. However, there has been nobody that's taken advantage of that so far. Nobody's contacted us saying, "Hey, we're ready to come test out, verify that."
You know, sometimes Dropbox can be intimidating if you haven't used it. Do y'all give some training on how a beginner who's never utilized Dropbox can access that?
I think we gave the instructions out. Now, that's something we can talk about at our next G's meeting, to give a couple of one-pager. We could do that, certainly could, yeah. So far, we haven't had anybody reach out saying, "Hey, I don't understand this," but...
I mean, I use it regularly, and sometimes I get mixed up, and I'm unable to share that information or access even my own information.
Because what we sent out was actually a link to the folder, so if they click on that, it puts them right where they need to be.
Yeah, this is great. They can study in the comfort of their easy chair at home, I guess, watching these.
That's correct.
Great idea.
And remind you, the primary focus on training for the agreement with the volunteer departments, and what benefits us as well as them, is structured fire support, is motor vehicle accident support, wildland fires, and vehicle fires, and that's kind of what we focused on so far with our countywide training. The first one we did was water shuttle. Then, in, I guess, July, which will be the next report, we did wildland training. So it's, we're really trying to focus on the basics of what we really need out there. The next report is showing the response for volunteers in June, is updated through June, and you'll notice that we're showing 92 total volunteer firefighters in the county, again, only counting those three that are members of departments. We don't count them once. So of the 92, we have 32 that make more than one out of 25, one out of four calls. 60 of them make less than 25% of the calls, and 10 of those 60 have made no calls at all, and that's pretty much been steady since April. April, May, and June, it's, no matter how many volunteer firefighters there are, in, like in April, they showed 121 total. In May, 89. June, 92. We're only getting 29 to 32 of those people showing up on calls more than one out of four times.
You know, and that may be the new norm, I don't know, but I think these are the numbers, commissioners, that we ought to be in tune with and see how these total volunteer firefighter numbers fluctuate, if they stay steady, if they go up, if they go down, and so that you have an understanding of just how many of them are able to make these calls. So look at those figures and be mindful of those in the months ahead as we kind of monitor those, and hopefully, we at least maintain, if not increase, and hopefully, we don't decline from these points.
You know, obviously, we've got, you know, we're not getting that many that are turning out to make the calls. The next report I draw your attention to is the overlapping calls, and this is actually for May and June, and these are calls where our department was on a call, and then another call came in. And so far, it's, as you see in May, we had about 10% of those. In June, we had about 67 that overlapped. And you'll notice, like on the first page, on 529 and 21, we had extrication and a vehicle accident, and they both pretty much happened at the same time. Luckily, we were able to have enough resources, or the situation stabilized enough in the first one, we were able to send some resources to the second call, but, you know, those are just close calls. If those have both been bad accidents, somebody was going to suffer, because we would not have had the resources to send to it. Same thing, if you look over in June, we had a couple of extrications and vehicle accidents at the same time, motor vehicle accidents and a false alarm at a hotel. Luckily, the hotel was a false alarm. If it had been a fire in the hotel, we would not have had the resources to deal with it, because we're tied up on those calls. Those are occurring, like I said, 10% of the time, on average, we're, through the year, 10% of our calls are overlapping, and again, it's kind of not, you know, if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen that we're going to get situations come in where we can't handle those calls. Other report I'll draw your attention to is the last one there. It's a comparison of city and county incidents from 2014 through 2020, and it shows, it's broken down by city and county, and you'll notice, overall, we make more calls in the city in that timeframe, 4,757, as opposed to the county with 2,641. However, when you break it down into the significant incidents, which are the ones that are highlighted in yellow, which are structured fires, grass fires, motor vehicle accidents, and vehicle extrication, when you break it down to just those, in the city, we make less of those, 1,044. In the county, it's 1,304. And when you further break it down a little further, on the right column, actually, number of hours spent on these calls, in the city, it's 967 hours, and in the county, it's 1,541. So, you know, we're spending, you know, way more time on significant calls in the county than we are in the city.
These are, are these totals over that six-year period or five-year period?
Yes.
Okay. This is not average, this is total.
No, that's totals.
Okay. And of course, that includes your travel time and travel out to a county incident, probably typically going to be a longer travel.
Yeah.
So that's part of the time that's taken.
And you'll know, well, it's kind of, on a structured fire, it's about two hours, city or county. So it's when you get down to the grass fires, in the city, they average about, you know, three-quarters of an hour. Out in the county, they average about an hour and a half, because generally, there's a lot more burning out in the county, and it takes a lot more. And vehicle extrication is kind of the same thing. They're still the same, city, county. Motor vehicle accidents, city and county, generally the same, as the grass fires, it's increased the time spent.
Okay. Well, this gives us a good perspective of just how much time the city spends working out in the county. It's not that we just occasionally need you, and this is just a small part of your workload. No, it's a significant part of your workload.
And one of the reasons that we have a higher volume in the city is because there's causes that we make in the city we don't make in the county. We make a whole lot more false alarms in the city, because there are just more alarms in the city, and then we do the first responder program in the city more than we do out in the county. That's more of the miscellaneous stuff that adds up so much. You see the miscellaneous in 1621 in the city and 483 out in the county, so. But when you break it down to the really significant calls, county outweighs the city a long shot.
Very good. Good, concise, easy to understand information. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions here for Chief?
There's just one other statement I want to make. Evidently, there's a rumor going out around in the county that my ultimate goal is to do away with all the volunteer fire departments in the county, and I can assure you that that is a further thing for my agenda. I think you would see, we're bending over backwards to try to train these volunteer departments and make them a viable asset for this county as well as helping us, so.
Again, unfortunate that somebody would say that.
Yes.
That doesn't, that's a lose-lose for everybody.
Yes.
Especially you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Item number five, an update on repairs and improvements to the Justice Center. Steve, you're more in tune with that. I see the trucks over there, and I know there's things that have gone on the outside. It looks like they got the metal replaced on the north and south ends of the building, where they covered the holes that were left by the old ventilation fans that blew air through there, and now those are sealed off, because we're going to insulate that attic in there, and so tell us what they are doing on the inside, if anything. I believe that Stanford Construction's 120-day period began, do you know when that was?
I was thinking that it was May, but I think not.
You're thinking what?
No, it was like, no, they had, the agreement in, their verbiage in their agreement said
they would start once they had, of course, all the documents signed. It was like two and a half weeks after we approved them in here, which gave them time to get materials ordered and find out, you know, where they were going to be running into problems. Justin has not called me to say that they've run into a significant materials problem yet. Let's hope that it stays that way, but I know we are in the 120-day period now. I want to say it began the last week of July or...
The last week of July.
Okay. What else?
End of October, maybe nowhere, and hopefully, that's completed. I've talked to Joey Bynum, who's rembranding the job.
Yeah, pull that mic down a little bit for the folks. There you go.
I talked to Joey Bynum, who's the foreman over the job, and just a little while ago, to get a more clear update on it. On the inside, they have completed replacing the sheet rock that was torn out, and this week, they're starting to blow the insulation in the building as required. Next week, they're looking at starting on the air conditioning replacement and repair, ducts work and all that stuff.
Who's doing the AC work?
I'm sorry?
Who is doing the air conditioning work?
I'd, to be honest with you, I'm not, not sure who's doing it. I will find that out, though.
I'm just curious.
And also, next week, they plan on start the tape and bedding of the insulation, I mean, the sheet rock that's been placed. So... So, in our eyes, it's looking prosperous.
Is the ceiling grid all pulled down?
The ceiling grid's all pulled down.
So you see all the way to the underside of the roof?
See, all the way underneath. They're prepared the ceiling for the roof, for the blowing in, and they've got the holes cut in the outer walls to start blowing the insulation into that.
Good.
So, it looks good. They had no issues that have come up that I'm aware of, and Joey's supposed to be keeping me up to date on any of that.
Okay, all right.
All right?
Thank you.
Good deal.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping up with all that.
Item number six and seven, kind of two items today that it would be great if we could get done today rather than having a separate meeting for this. But item six is to discuss the tax rate options as calculated by the Titus County Appraisal District. Shirley's been in communication with Barbara and myself. She's finalized her values and has presented to us the options that we get each year. And just to review those, you'll remember these terms, in the old days, we had the effective tax rate, and then you had the rollback rate. We've given those a new name. The effective tax rate was, and still is, the rate at which would, if applied to current values in the current year, would raise the same revenue as the prior budget year. We call that, hence, the no-new revenue rate. No new revenue, so it keeps the revenue the same. You have the current tax rate, in other words, that's the rate that was utilized, that was published, and that people paid their taxes based upon in the prior year. And then you have the voter approval rate, or the rollback rate. That is the rate at which, if it is exceeded, if the court were to set a tax rate above that, you would have to achieve voter approval in order to do that. So you've been provided a document there, and there are additional copies over there on the table if anyone wants to see that. And Barbara has put this together in a nice, neat, concise, easy-to-understand format there, where you can see what your two individual components of your tax rate are, your maintenance and operation, and your interest and sinking fund, or your debt service. And the, then you have a total, the combination of those two. So bear in mind that our most recent tax rate that we set last year, that people just paid their taxes on there in fall of last year, up through the end of January, and some that are late are still paying, that current tax rate is 46.79 cents, or .4679. That's your current tax rate. Interesting to note that your no-new revenue rate and your voter approval tax rate, in other words, we're not going to raise any additional revenue, and we've got to achieve the approval of the taxpayers if we exceed it, are both within roughly a penny of one another. .4574 on that low end, .4690 on the higher end, and our current rate falls there in the middle at .4679. In the second part of this presentation, she has given you the estimated amount of tax collections, assuming we never are going to collect 100% of the taxes, so we've used this year .97 and a half percent. The assumed collections would result in this total collection. Now you'll note that the INS, or your debt service, is a consistent number there, that's a fixed. We don't have the ability to pay additional or to not pay the entire amount that is due, and so therefore, it is reflected at the $1,258,182 in each of these three scenarios. The number that changes is the maintenance and operation there. You'll see in the no-new revenue rate, that total revenue raised is eight, well, call it nine million, it's 8,994,782. If you use the current tax rate of 46.79, that would glean you an additional $218,000. And then the voter approval rate, if you exceed that, would raise 9,234,973. I'll let you look at those for just a second, I'll give you some comments, you're welcome to comment, but what I'm hoping we can do in the next item is make a decision. Barbara, what would you like to add, if anything, to what I've just said here to help the commissioners get the best possible grasp we can of all these numbers?
Our tax rate has come down over the last two years. It comes down an insignificant amount, but it does come down. We have to keep in mind that this year, we are giving raises, and because we're giving raises, we need to make sure that we generate funds to pay for those raises. If we don't meet that requirement, in the future, we can only raise it 3.5%. So I'm not asking you to raise the tax rate by any means, because as Judge Lee brought to your attention, it's less than a penny, thousands of a penny out there, you know, the rounding. So that one thousandth of a penny makes about a $20,000 difference. So you have some other things there at your place that Judge Lee, I prepared that Judge Lee put out there for you to see what it would be if we took our current tax rate and revised it 1,1000, 2,1000, or 3,1000. That would be at your discretion. I also want to tell you that Shirley Dickerson calculates this information for us, and we work back and forth to make sure that we have good numbers for the public. And once you make that decision, the budget's ready to go. We need to file that by Friday with the county clerk, and so I would ask that you make a decision today on the proposed tax rate. Whatever it is that you decide to adopt, when it's time to raise your hand and officially vote, you can reduce that amount, but you can't increase that amount.
The total dollars, and you've shown us this figure before, but just as a reminder, that the raises that we have, at least at this point, decided to do, will cost us an additional how much per year by the time you factor in the raise and the benefits to go with it?
About $264,000.
Okay. Remember that figure, 264,000. Here's another figure to remember. If we assume 97.5% collection rate, for every penny that the tax rate goes up or down, that's a swing of about $207,000. So, 260 to pay for the raises, a penny raises $207,000. Now look there at your no-new revenue tax rate of 45.74. If we were to use that rate, that's what would raise the same revenue as the year before. Common sense would tell you, if you're giving raises, that's not a one-year Christmas bonus, that is a raise that is going to stick with you. And if you don't pay for that somehow, then you're either going to rely on, well, I'll recoup that money next year, I don't want to deal with it this year, I'll deal with it somewhere down the road, or you're going to erode into your savings, into your fund balance. So, what I, I'm going to give you my personal thoughts, I'm not telling you what to do. My personal thoughts are, if you keep the current tax rate of .4679, you are going to reap the benefit from the fact that our appraisals across the board have slightly gone up, and therefore, you would be able to raise roughly an additional $200,000, very close to being able to pay for those raises that you've tried, that you supposedly are going to give. If you say, no, I'm going to stick with the no-new revenue rate, and you go with 45.74, you have not figured, you have not, at least this year, paid for those raises. Now, raises is just one thing that goes up each year, as our population increases and as the cost of things goes up, and you know how that's affected your own personal budgets as expenses have gone up, and we're starting to see very real inflation. I would strongly recommend that you go to at least the current tax rate, or keep the current tax rate. I don't recommend you exceeding that, you could, but you couldn't exceed it by very much. .4679 to .4690 is very insignificant, but you exceed that, you're going to have to get voter approval to do that. And anytime that, you know, right now, you've got limitations on how much you can raise your taxes without getting voter approval. Our legislature in Austin has graciously provided those limitations to us. They want us to continue to pay for their unfunded mandates, but they don't want you to raise your tax rate. So that's my rationale and justification I'm giving you for maintaining that current tax rate of .4679. Now, we're not to item number seven yet, where we're considering and possibly approving a proposed tax rate. We are in the discussion phase. So, if you have more questions of me, or Barbara, ask, or if you have comments that you want to give on any of these figures here, this is a great time to do it.
Guys, I'd like to propose option three, which would cut the current tax rate to the .4669.
We're not on item seven yet.
So we're not, I'm just saying, this is my thought on it, we're just discussing it. So, I would want to, I want to lower that tax rate, and we can tighten up, and I know we can make it, and we can do this. That's what we're here for. So, I'm proposing option three. Let y'all, see what y'all think.
Okay, when you say option three...
Tax rate of .4669.
Barbara, do you have any idea what's the collection rate he's been on the last three years?
I think I've got, I've got that over here.
The requirement is that the tax collector calculates that rate. Melissa Stevens calculated it this year, we dealt from Shirley Dickerson because it's Melissa's first year. And while we're here, I want to tell y'all, Melissa's doing a very good job. She's doing a good job for us. So the right, the 97.5 is what she's recommended for next year. Last year's budget was at 94.5, because that's what Judy Hoop turned in. The previous year, it was around 96, and it stayed mostly between 95 to 96 for several years, but last year was 94.5.
Good job, Melissa.
Let me make sure all y'all are looking at this one that Fitch has talked about, option one, two, three. Everybody got that?
Yeah.
So he is, that's, Fitch has expressed his opinions. Thank you, John.
I feel the same way. I think we need to go with option three as well, because I think that'll drop us about $20,000, and I think that'd be a good thing.
Okay. Anybody on the East End?
I, myself, like the option three.
Is that a little loud out today? Is that a little...
Yeah, that was option three, I was just looking at...
Did you grunt? I didn't hear, I heard solidly.
He did grunt. Precinct three grunted on that, so.
Okay.
I think it was a positive grunt, that's what it sounded like. I remember your bones was creaking or something, I think.
Okay, once again, thanks to Shirley, Melissa, and both of all, to Barbara for putting this in a format that even a judge and commissioner can understand.
Last week was a busy week for everybody, and those numbers driving everybody crazy and going back and forth, and I appreciate y'all.
Yeah, thank y'all.
And everything y'all do, and it's a big, big effort.
We have benefited greatly from the opportunities we've had to refinance our debt, and by less interest that we've had to pay, that gives us more functional dollars in maintenance and operations. So again, that's another reason we've been able to hold the line on this tax rate. So that sounds to me like a very acceptable option, just a hair below what I think you should do, about $20,000, but it does give you the ability to say that we've lowered the tax rate, however small that might be, it's certainly better than going the other direction. I will call for any more comments, questions, discussion related to item six before I move on to item seven. All right, item number seven, consider and possibly approve a proposed tax rate for 2021. This is what's getting ready to be published, and as Barbara reminded you, once you propose this, you can go down there in the nth hour as we get into September, but you cannot go up.
Make a motion that we set the rate tendatively at .4669.
All right, Commissioner Fitch makes a motion that we approve a proposed tax rate of .4669. And I have a second by Commissioner Parchman. Any comments or discussion?
Judge Lee, can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we say that the M&amp;O rate and the INS are separately...
I'll be glad to expand on that, or Commissioner Fitch will.
Okay, let me back up there. So let's propose that M&amp;O rate at .4120, and the INS rate at .0549, which is the same as last year, obviously, same amount of debt, so. And then, of course, the tax rate at .4669.
Being a combination of the two.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Parchman, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number eight. Let me switch gears here. Let me, while we're on this subject, just kind of go over the budget here, just so we know what is looming here. Just starting with the August portion of the calendar related to the budget, we got the appraisal district rates, no new revenue, and the voter approved. We certified the anticipated collection rate. The appraiser has delivered to us that information. Today, county judge submits the tax rate to the commissioners' court and posts the calculated rate on the website. We've taken a record vote on the proposed tax rate. Now you look there at the next date of the 13th, before filing the annual proposed budget with the clerk. Give written notice to each elected county and precinct officer of the officer's proposed salary and personal expenses to be included in the budget. That has been provided for you. We move on to the next page. On the 13th, this week, the proposed budget will be filed with the clerk, and then is available to anyone who wants to inspect that. It's also posted on the website. On the 14th, which is Saturday, the newspaper gets a posting there showing these proposed increases and the amounts of the salaries, expenses, or allowances of any elected county official. Again, we know that that's $1,200 across the board, that's what that posting will reflect. And then you can see that we get into September, early September, earlier than we've done in the past, and we'll conduct a public hearing on the budget, the tax rate, we'll set the salaries, adopt the budget, and adopt the tax rate there, hopefully in early September. Okay, item number eight, we've got two of these. We've got, consider and possibly approve a bid in the amount of $500 from Heather Oldham for Lot 1, Block 228B. This is located at 1321 Taylor Street. This was property, as we've dealt with many times before, couldn't get any bidders at the tax auction, it was struck off, it's not earning a dime in taxes. So let me tell you more details about this that Ms. Oldham has offered up a bid for. This is from Tim Taylor, who's received a bid of $500. Will sell the property with the consent of all the other entities... Will sell the property with the consent of all the other entity, taxing entities involved. The sales price for the above lot is for less than the judgment, which was $3,044, and the appraised value of $1,932. So this is not one of those where we have a crazy high value or judgment, but nonetheless, $500 is pretty cheap. It's located at 1321 Taylor Street. There's been no interest in that lot since the city obtained it. Any questions about that?
Make a motion, we approve it.
Approve to sell is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor of accepting $500 bid from Heather Oldham for 1321 Taylor, say aye.
Aye.
This time, we've got a $4,000 bid. The city has accepted this bid and is willing to sell this property with the consent of the other entities. The sales price is less than the judgment, which was $25,600, and the appraised value of $47,994. However, that appraised value that's been on the books included a structure on the lot which is currently uninhabitable and must be torn down. It's not salvageable. The appraised value of the lot only was $3,840. So putting that into perspective, the guy's willing to pay $4,000 for a $3,800 lot, and it sounds like he's going to bear the expense of tearing the structure down. This is located at 703 East 16th Street.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Hmm, that was close. I'm going to go, I'm going to go with Fitch, he's louder. Motion and second, Commissioner Parker to accept this $4,000 bid from Mr. Eric Torres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Get that back on the tax rolls. Item number 10, consider and possibly approve an order to adopt the Titus County Clerk's Office Records Archival Plan for 2022. This is an annual thing that we do to approve the plan that Joan has put together to preserve our records. Joan, would you like to comment on this?
Last year, I preserved four historical survey record books. I found another one after I got the approval. So you will see on the proposal, there is one more, and it's record five. It is, it's in pretty much, it really, really needs to be, there are blueprints in it that need to be preserved. Also, the volumes 50 through 52, two, three volumes, historical value, they're all, most of it, I mean, there's some that is less than 100 years old, but most of it is 100 years old. And the books are deteriorating as well as the paper. This preservation is like, it'll include the acidifying, the pages, so that they stop decaying and as well as being slain in archival leaks. So I will go out with bids, but I have budgeted $47,000 for this restoration, which is well within the balance in this dedicated fund.
And that revenue is raised each year by fees that are paid. This doesn't come out of our general budget. That's an expensive restoration job, but it's a tedious job and it's an important job. And so again, Joan is planning on spending the $47,000, that is the projected revenue. So if you have any questions for Joan, now's the time. If you're okay with this plan that she has put together and will file as an adopted plan, and we will, we will each sign this, we're going to vote on that if you're ready to do that.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion to approve the Clerk's Archival Plan for 2022 is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm going to pass you this for your signature. Got to be quicker, Joe. Item number 11, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion, we approve it.
That motion comes from Commissioner Parchman for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll sort of tell what all the county officials will report.
Be glad to show those to you. I'll be glad to show those to you. Let's move on to item number 12, consider and possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that leaves signatures. Item number 13, approve budget amendments. I've got items 48, 49, and 50 are the numbers of these budget amendments. All right, send that there. Got my notes on this. Okay, the first one, number 48, involves precincts two and four. I'll break those down. Precinct two is asking to reallocate $708 out of trash pickup, put it into other road materials. And precinct four is asking to adjust up, needs $150 more in the water bill budget, and is pulling that out of other road materials, $150 offsetting. Item number 49 comes from the sheriff. And this is, the overall objective here is to allocate funds to line items within the sheriff's commissary as needed to complete the fiscal year, the net impact being zero. So we're pulling $4,000 out of building repairs and maintenance, and we're pulling $646 out of the education supplies budget, and we're allocating that between three accounts: hygiene supplies, prisoner uniforms, and other expense. And as you know, we've got strong occupancy at the jail with the federal prisoners and tight budget here, so he's tweaking as he can in order to stay within each of these line items. The final budget amendment does impact the budget. It is pulled out of our contingency account, which is a budgeted account, but it's still more general in nature, and it's for things like this, where we have unforeseen expenses that have come up that were not budgeted. In this case, $3,260 increase is needed to our internet expense due to the increased cost, and we're pulling $3,260 out of the contingency fund to cover our internet expense. Can you be more specific what that might be, internet expense?
It's one single bill that we paid to Suddenlink.
Will you pull that mic over there? A specific bill we paid to Suddenlink?
Yes, sir. It's one specific bill that we paid to Suddenlink. We owe two more months out of this budget. The bill is $1,630. So that's all that I'm asking that you increase, that budget.
Okay. Is that going to be a new norm, a higher expense?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll need to budget more for that, because that wasn't just a out-of-the-ordinary something that came through.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so those are the three amendments.
Make a motion, we approve the amendments.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're down to item number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments of bills.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Closing comments by judge and commissioners. We've got a little bit of an out-of-the-ordinary situation. A matter came up after this was posted, and therefore, I posted a second agenda as I scrambled on Friday morning to get that posted prior to today's meeting. And I guess I kind of, well, I couldn't have gotten it posted any quicker than 10:30. So after we're done here, we're going to take a 20-minute break or so, and we're going to reconvene at 10:30 for a single agenda item that has to do with speeding up the process of getting that damaged piece of equipment that Jimmy referred to fixed, as well as leasing a replacement piece so that we can continue our work. So for those of you that are here and want to listen in on that, that'll be at 10:30, and that should be brief, but nonetheless, important. We didn't want to delay that any longer because we want to get, make sure we can get a piece of equipment rented so that we can get back on our seal coating. Closing comments. I have one item here that relates to our Congressman Pat Fallon. And as you'll recall, Gay was here, Gay Beard, his constituent services rep. She's out of Texarkana. Pat Fallon is our congressman that took the place of John Ratcliffe. She is wanting you to know that Congressman Pat Fallon will be here in Mount Pleasant at the Civic Center on August 19th at 1:30. So that's not this week, that'll be next week. I think that's a Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right? If today's the night, okay. So Thursday of next week, a rare opportunity to have our Congressman, U.S. Congressman, here at the Civic Center, 1:30 p.m. I will have a COVID conference call tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. just to get an update from Terry and hope to be able to have a better idea of what our situation here is. Terry has not asked for a conference call. I think that members of our leadership group that met on that conference call for so long just wants to be kept updated. You know, everybody's hearing more talk about this, certainly nationally and statewide, so how are things here? So I'll have that meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. That's all I have. Jeff, you have anything?
Yes, we finally got our window fixed and our tractor, so hopefully this week we can get some mowing done while I'm overdue. And I wanted to mention that we got our fire hydrant shut off up at our county, at our county barn, and I was hoping that us as commissioners could probably come up with an idea or some way to resolve, make a deal with the city, because I know if we, I'd still like to use it, and it's going to be pretty expensive if we use it, fill up our water truck to wet our roads. So I just wondered if we could find an idea to resolve it and come up with something better, a better solution so we can continue to get water.
Tell me what you mean by they cut it off.
It's, they said we can no longer use it. They want to put a meter on it to start charging us for it. So they, I guess, they accused us of stealing water, I guess, this awesome toll that we get put out there, assuming that we were taking water without paying for it.
And were we?
No, we weren't stealing water, no. We weren't, I mean, there's no meter on it, but it's always been there, been there for years, and nobody's ever said anything about it, so. Anyway, I just want to continue to use it and.
So technically, we are using city water on a city hydrant, so it sounds like you would like for me to call the city manager and find out what we can do. If, if this is a new situation and we are going to be asked to pay for that water, we don't have a problem paying for it, we just want to have access to water, whether it's there, and that would be the most convenient location for us?
Yes.
Okay. And this hydrant is located where?
It's at our first, our second gate, second entrance gate to the warehouse.
1700 Industrial.
Okay.
It's on 1700 Industrial Maintenance Shop.
So how far in off of Industrial Road?
Right there to the second gate.
Second gate, right beside.
About 100 yards, 100 yards, okay.
Right before you go into the side.
Regardless, if, it needs to be turned on in case they ever fired under, they got, unless they, you know.
That's the thing. I mean, if our shop was to catch on fire, that hydrant is, they've got it shut off now, and they would have, I don't, where the next hydrant's at, I hadn't really looked, but with that one shut off, yeah.
Can y'all give me any kind of an idea of how much water we're talking about that we would like? Do we use 1,000 gallons at a time, and how often do we use it?
Well, we try to pull mostly out of our mixing field or any kind of lake that we can, but that truck holds what, 1,000 gallons at a time, and it, we can go through some wa, you know, water.
Well, let me quantify for me. Will we fill it up in a year 50 times, 20 times?
Probably 50.
50 times? So 50,000 gallons?
At least.
Okay. I will call the city manager and see what we can, will you help me remember to do that? And who did you talk to?
It was, I think I can get his number, I can't remember where it's at. I think it's Nathan Perrin, the one I talked to, but I can find out, clarify that for you.
Yeah, you think it's there. Definitely a city employee.
Yes.
Okay. That's probably good enough. Anything else? Commissioner Fitch?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Applewhite? Commissioner Parker?
The only thing, I got a text here a little bit ago from, from the maintenance shop, said that the adjuster was there to look at her chip machine. So as soon as I can get out of here, I'm going to head out there and.
Do we need you for this 10:30 meeting, or can we let you go and call you if we, is there anything that we couldn't communicate with him over the phone about? Okay. Why don't you bust out of here and go, and then commissioners just don't stray too far, 10:30, one item agenda. If there's nothing else, we'll bring this meeting to a close with a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.